There's nobody in the room.
Hello, how you doing?
Good, how about you?
Oh. No complaints, no one listens, right?
Counselors, did you see our time capsule presentation on our YouTube channel?
I missed it.
It's there, take it out and get to answer.
Should've gone to it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't find the old one, but we put a new one in. It's a good story.
How penetrating radar?
Yeah, I guess that's what, that's what you need, right?
We came in after, but it was funny, you know how things happen. So a high school friend of mine that was behind me a couple of years of high school called me. He said, "I got the ground penetrating radar." I said, "Really?" So we went back to the site. So the interesting part, that used to be an old graveyard, you know, before it was the town center there.
And they moved graves, did they?
They moved the graves over here to West Street.
Oh, no kidding.
So we took a scan and just to the right of where we dug, we had a really strong hit. So it's a, it was a little bit under that pathway. So we documented it, we're gonna put it with the group that does another 50 years to make it see because we know it was vandalized. The question is, do you think the public works, we're trying to put it back in, but who knows where it is. One of those mysteries.
He made it.
There it is.
How was the trip?
I came across so many bedwogs.
I know, we're pretty big up there. We're up the, we're really big up north and then also in like the Bay of Louisiana.
Yeah.
Hey Sean, I've heard it said rumor that the don't, you know, help them deal with it.
How do you feel about that?
The sale to, how's it trust?
Pretty good. I'm on vacation, so.
There might be, I'm not close to it. The good news is that the morbid restrictions that were in place today persists. So there'll be anything changing. It'd be nice to take all the risk.
You know, the fact that you can't do it all at the same time. So I think the next step is number one to get me on a new, you know, as a, yes. But I really think that does mean that giving some of the stuff now. Discharge of firearms.
He's our senator.
Especially target, that we probably can't do that much more than that. But maybe the question for a little bit more to allow discharge in this order in certain areas. Yep. Well, that's what kept me really happy.
So I was just thinking about meeting each other about any best practices.
So can I? Why don't you have to go to your side, whether or not that any person has any, they're not being contacted. No, very, very bad information exchange. I know, it will, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's like my, my number, that's, that's what I always want to happen first. But it's not for some reason, like maybe I want to. I'm always prepared.
And then we also have.
And I will say it's, you know, certainly not to push your rights, desires, and the, to have when we think about compromise.
Recording in progress.
Because you don't know what's gonna be at the end of the trial.
Yeah.
Except somebody with a gun, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
He doesn't like to get this.
Yeah.
Chip is not here, he doesn't vote in Annapolis.
And not. He ate coffee for approved notes.
Recording?
Yeah, recording's on, all right. We will call the meeting to order. Welcome, this is council meeting 14-24, the Freeport Town Council. It is Tuesday, July 16th. Time's just a couple of minutes after six o'clock and we'll get right into our agenda. But first is the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's find out who's here, councillor Pillsbury.
Present.
Councillor Fornier.
Here.
Councillor Benoit.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Pilch.
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Councillor Lawrence has excused some obligation to be on a boat on such a nice evening. We'll have to look into that. Our next order on the agenda is to waive the reading of the minutes from meeting number 13-24, held on July 2nd, 2024, and to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. All right, so we're next on to announcements. I have a couple to start with and then we'll go down the line, see if anybody else has any others. First one is the nomination papers for all elected positions in our community will be available beginning July 29th. Open seats include a councillor-at-large, the councillor for District 4, RSU 5, Board of Directors, Sewer District and Water District. Please contact the Clerk's Office for more information. The Clerk's Office is trying to organize and run a small free book nook at Town Hall. They're in desperate need of book donations to continue offering the book nook. All books are welcome. Oh, I have a couple I can bring in. So that's all that I have. We might get to a couple of other discussion points and information exchange. Would any other announcements councillors would like to make? Okay. Moving on to information exchange, this is the part of our agenda for councillors to share feedback, constituent information, committee work, process with committees, those kinds of things. And specifically, we have the 22 Main Street Committee report from councillor Pillsbury that we'll start with.
We do not yet.
We do not yet.
It's back to the committee and there's been a little bit of feedback. I think it's mostly positive, but I do want to address a couple of the comments. Should have it soon.
Okay. Other items, councillor Fornier.
Yes, I guess I believe this is the right area for it. I happened to be at Town Hall when a medical emergency occurred and fire department staff was tied up on other calls. And we had the opportunity to see Officer Matt DuVell respond as a local police officer who's also trained as an EMT. And for many years, a lot of the police officers have been trained as EMTs, they get a stipend for that. And I, as a former fire chief, and I guess more importantly, as a citizen of the town, was very pleased with the professionalism, they, how he acted, the timely response. And to my knowledge, the outcome was very positive. So I want to encourage our police officers to maintain their EMT license. It just makes us a safer and more vibrant and strong community by that and particularly recognize his efforts for that call.
That's great, great to hear that. Glad it was a positive outcome for the visitor to Town Hall. Joanna.
So as I spoke about last meeting, we're still getting some noises about, or complaints about gun noise. And we received information from Representative Sacks that we are able to sort of think through if we want to do a discharge ordinance and what that might look like for Freeport. The big thing with that is we need to work with and get the approval of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. And so I was thinking it might be worthwhile to maybe work with Inland Fisheries on best practices, some do's and don'ts and ideas and how we might be able to approach this from, from their vantage point, so.
Do we know if those suggested practices or outlines that IFNW have shared, have they been implemented and successful in any other communities? In other words, do we have some role models of where this might have actually?
That would be the, the point of working with them. I haven't spoken with them yet, I wanted to bring it to council first and get input on, from you folks. But I would assume if any other municipalities in Maine are doing this, they would have that, that information.
Well, regardless of where, you know, where it might be happening, the complaints have been fairly regular since my time on the council, which is approaching nine years. So it's not something new, it's not something that goes away, it's not something that's real frequent. But if you're near it, it can be quite an impact on, on your day-to-day life. So we have to have something, I think, that we can respond. And I've not actually seen the council be given any tools on what it can do. So we're usually just deferring, well, that's the state issue, but.
Yep, so we're getting feedback on, on sort of how we can address it as a municipality. And speaking with councillor Fornier, you know, we have to make sure we approach this carefully in the right way. So that's kind of the goal of hopefully working with Inland Fisheries.
I would just say that there are a number of communities, particularly in the greater Portland area, that have firearms ordinances, many of them that prohibit rifle fire. It, it's limited to black powder or shotgun. I think councillor Fornier had expressed some concern that, you know, for people that are getting ready for hunting season, they may want to be using rifles, but I think they're, hopefully there's somewhere in between. And I do think that part of the reality we're seeing in Maine is as, in areas that are becoming more densely populated, particularly in Cumberland County, this has clearly been a concern in other communities too.
Darren, you had your hand up.
Having experienced a, a event where I was targeting practicing with rifles to go on a moose hunt, some new neighbors moved in and were very concerned, I actually called the police officers. And luckily I was able to find out there was a complaint, I was able to go over and talk to them. What concerns me is we're losing that opportunity and we seem to bring more and more laws on, which I think infringes on a lot of rights. I would be very cautious as a person, that I enjoy shooting with my grandsons and my granddaughters on our property. And we're out in a rural area, so I hope, I hope we can exhaust every opportunity we have to settle this issue without having to go to some extreme measures. And, and you know, councillor Smith brought up a good point too. You hear somebody shooting, it's, you know, are you gonna walk down the driveway? Probably not, I'd be thinking about that myself personally. But maybe there's some opportunities that we can look at, at all opportunities. I just think that, I hate seeing government constantly bringing in some additional thing that takes rights away from vandalism.
Communication goes a long way.
It can't.
Yeah, and I, and that's why I want to be, I agree with you and I want to be incredibly mindful that I think it's about finding compromise and how we can live in harmony, I guess. But that's, that's definitely the intention, I agree with you on that.
So I would, I would just say that I've only been here for a mere seven months and this issue has circled through a couple of times since I've been here. And I think one of the frustrations from our law enforcement personnel is not having clear directive, either tools or what, you know, we have a noise ordinance, yet it's really not enforceable. So I think we need to kind of look at that. And we're getting direction, depending on which lawyer you talk to, about what our rights and responsibilities are. So my suggestion, and I think it has to do more with process as opposed to coming up with what the decision is gonna be first. There are clearly people in the community, in various places, we've heard from two sides of town, concerned about gunfire. And it would seem to me that if, I have 12 Cumberland County towns that have ordinances that relate to gunfire. My question is gonna be, are they in their urban area, their rural area? We're gonna have to kind of look at that. We can reach out to IFNW and I think it would make sense for me to come back with some information so that you can have a conversation and people who are concerned about this can come forward and tell you. And people who feel strongly that you shouldn't address it could come forward and talk to you about it. So I'm gonna channel my inner councillor Benoit and talk about process. And I think what I'm hearing is a need to at least hear and then council could make a decision whether to pursue.
Have a question. I think our police officers are somewhat limited because we have no ordinance or whatever to address that. Would a game warden, game wardens have more authority in many areas? And I'm not sure if they've been reached out to or not, but maybe that might be another level where they have much more authority than local police officers do, particularly in these type of matters. So maybe that might be an opportunity to check with a local warden that lives over on Pleasant Hill Road in Brunswick and, and see if maybe they could help us out.
Yeah, and I think that's why I mentioned reaching out to IFW today. And it sounds like Sophie, you're comfortable with sort of taking that on and getting options and information.
Yeah. And then I think we can come back and schedule it as an item under other business and let, so the world sees it. You know, I think one of the things that should, people should understand is that right now, if the police department gets a complaint about discharge of firearms, people not feeling safe, they go out and they try to figure out where it is. They've knocked on doors and told people that their neighbors are concerned. It is important, the more data we could collect on where the concerns really are would be helpful. So if people are concerned, they should call the police. It's also interesting that, so Title 30A, Section 311 talks about target practicing and recreational shooting. And although it's framed in the context of shooting facilities and target, you know, not target practicing, but recreational target shooting, the attorney that I spoke with was really clear that they would think that where it exempts that idea of recreational shooting from noise ordinances in Section 311, that that would be for general target practicing. So I don't think the way to approach this is going to be through a noise ordinance. I think it's going to be through community conversation and discussing whether the council feels like we have places that they want to allow discharge or not, or limit what type of discharge. So it was really nice to talk to an attorney who had really thought about guns.
So I think just again, as a process person, what would be the sort of next steps in timeline on that, do you think?
I think given Nate's current schedule, because I'd wanna kind of keep him in the loop with this, I would think that for the late August meeting, we should be in a place where we could come back to you with kind of the summary of what our neighboring communities do and have at least an initial conversation with Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Put it in as other business, so it's simply a conversation, not action.
We don't have a late August meeting because we're out on Bustons on the 13th.
So early September meeting.
September 3rd.
Yep.
Until later in the agenda, we change it back.
Bustons changed their mind.
Moved it back and forth on us, so.
So we'll go back, so I would say September 3rd.
Yep.
Does that work? And we can also do graffiti at that point.
One thing that'd be helpful for me is, and maybe the PD can supply us that, where the complaint is in one area? Or, you know, that, I think, and I think, you know, that might be helpful, at least for me to process. If it's an issue that's all over town, or do we have one neighborhood that seems to be an area? That's a big difference on my way how to approach this.
I totally agree.
We're also limited in certain areas of town that if the shooting's happening in another town, but you, it's in your area in Freeport, that's, that's one of the issues too.
Thank you, Sophie, that sounds great. And I think just another sort of call to the community that if, you know, there is a concern in your neighborhood or this is bothering you, to reach out, for sure.
All right, any other items for information exchange? Joanna.
So I sit on the PACS Policy Board and I have been trying to wrap my head about the immense opportunities they offer in terms of RFPs and funding opportunities for especially active transportation projects. And so I sent that out to a few folks today and mostly just wanted to express my interest in working with the Complete Streets Committee about how we can sort of get a list of projects that might help push our transportation goals forward and so we can sort of prepare ourselves for these opportunities as they arise, so. Just wanted to put that out there.
I just want to bring up, I haven't been able to connect yet, but I'm hoping to do a little bit of a debrief with the organizers of the Great Race, which happened here at the end of June, to find out what, you know, what worked with them. I thought it was a spectacular event, I thought the, the out-of-state organization was highly organized. I don't know if that's, was everybody's experience, but that was mine. So if anybody would like to join me, it's gonna just be an informal cup of coffee somewhere, let me know and I'll loop you in when we get those connections made with the organizers, local organizers.
Just to follow up on Complete Streets, Complete Streets met last week and one of the things that, that continues to move along is the alternative transportation trail from basically Yarmouth to Pine Street. That's been moving through that process for quite some time and we are working to have Complete Streets bring proposals for that to the council in the next month or so. And I think we were talking about meeting dates before the Bustons change happened, so it'll be sometime in early fall. But Sophie and I, I believe next Tuesday, will be walking Route 1 with members of the Complete Streets Committee to get a firsthand look at what that length of Route 1 looks like as to how it, how it would be to have that additional trail lane right on Route 1 versus off-road, which is one of the proposals.
Great. All right, I don't see any other hands. Next item, Sophie, is the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, I want to make folks aware that we are, I've been working with an internal community group, if that makes any sense, who are advising me on accessibility issues. The, one of the issues that is coming up is some concern at Winslow Park. So Neil and I are gonna be working on that. Some of it, we've already addressed with signage and kind of, we bought some Jersey Barrier-like, they, they get filled up, that are gonna be placed. We, one of the issues, concerns is around the ramp that was installed and the ability to access. So we're kind of trying So we're kind of trying to take a methodical approach to addressing the concerns. One of the concerns that was raised was around the train platform and the ramp there being too steep. Earl not only did the calculation, but actually went out and bought a tool that will do the calculation, and miraculously, they came out to the same number.
Yeah, it's nowhere near one in 12 pitch.
Yeah, he's, he is pretty, yes. So we're okay over there. But I just, I know that we're starting that conversation. Earl is going to be doing some upgrades out at Hunter Road Fields that will happen later this year, once the contractor, we get him to town, to do the rest of the paving work. So that is a topic that is heating up. We are going to be, at some point, building out a page on the website. We're getting complaints about private businesses running services that aren't fully handicap-accessible, or employment-type accessibility things. And we are sending that right back to them with a referral to the appropriate state or federal agency. So just, if you start hearing that we're not, that we're talking about accessibility but not working on it, we really are working on it. We're just trying to do things methodically, because sometimes there's a difference between what people would like to see and what the ADA requires. So that was the first one. The second one is Earl is going to talk to you about a change that's coming up. It's so positive that I wanted him to come to the podium.
You could have done it, I would have been fine with that. I would like to say, for the second time in one year, we're going to close Main Street again. So there is a very large crane that has to set air conditioning units on top of the new L.L. Bean facility. When this idea first come to us, we looked at it very hard and tried to think about doing this at night. After talking to the crane company, and how much room they have to have, and doing it at night, we come up with a different plan. Right now, and I hate, I hate to do this, August the 6th, August the 16th, somewhere in that timeframe, we will have Main Street closed from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for one day. So that they can bring the crane in, and if you can imagine the size crane, it's got to get on top of that building, and he has to pick that up and swing around with it. So it will be between Bow Street and Justin's Way. The reason I give you the flexibility and the date is we're waiting on the MDOT to sign off on the plan. Crocker is doing all the work, they're doing all the legwork and permit, and I'm just sort of standing in the background helping give some guidance.
Between 7:00 a.m. and noon, or 7:00 a.m. and midnight?
So, no, in the morning.
In the morning. So all done by noon?
We looked at that, that is the least, I know it sounds, but it's the least amount of traffic, because after about noon time till late in the evening, it gets, it gets pretty busy. So that was the next time that we felt we could get in there and not disrupt traffic.
And the elementary school starts getting population back in it the following week, after the 16th. So getting that done before the 16th is really good for.
And the paperwork's been turned into the state, we're just waiting for their approval.
So you stay right there for a minute.
So the next item is Caroline and Earl have been working through a little bit of conflict at the Soul School parking lot. Do you want to briefly brief them on that?
The, as most of the counselors know, the parking area at the Soul School is shared with the Bustons Island people during the summertime. And it is getting quite crowded, and it's never been a problem in the past because the school didn't operate in the summer. However, now they are starting to operate in the summer, and it's one in two days of summer camp. So when they're there, they need their parking places. And, you know, when, when somebody's going out to the island, sees the open spot, and it's the middle of summertime, they pull in there and they don't think nothing of it. But it's affected the Soul School a little bit, so trying to help them to talk to each other and come up with a solution, how to fix that. So there is a question about adding some parking places that may be in the towns right away. That's something that I'm sort of waiting on them to come back to us and ask for.
Is the, can I ask a first question, and I'm sure other counselors have other questions? Is the, the operation of the school during the summer a relatively new?
Yes. Started this year.
Yeah.
This is, this is the first year.
Because I know we, we had some evidence, when this came up a couple of weeks ago, that the lease between the school and the town for those parking spaces is pretty clear that the public use for Bustons Island residents is the priority, until the school has an operation, and they, you know, that was defined in the lease, I guess, and maybe so that's what's changed.
It was very defined. The, the conflict coming into the Soul School, put reserve signs on, on the first nine stalls, which is their parking spaces, those are reserved for them. And some of the Bustons people maybe wasn't used to that, seeing that, and it, it upset a few people, to say the least.
About how many spaces do you think are part of the solution, Earl?
If you talk to Bustons, they need all the South Freeport. You know, I think it, it's worked good. There was conversations about maybe finding some alternative spots to do some parking, but where our, and I use this term very loosely, our old Silver Bullet location, where we had it sitting in that concrete pad, there's four spots right there, because that's no longer there. So there is a little bit of spots that could be, come up with.
Thank you for bringing your patience to the conversation. Any questions for Earl?
Just a question, not directly related to that, but related to Bustons parking. Is that what all the cars are on Church Road as well?
At times, yes.
Okay. Because that was, I noticed that was very full last weekend, and it didn't seem to be impending right away, but I wondered if that was just general South Freeport traffic, or, because there were a lot of out-of-state plates there.
With the, with the daycare that's run, and the Bustons Island, I would say it's a little bit of both. You know, and this is, as, as we met, me and my Sophie went out and met with Bustons Island, they're, they're pretty busy right now. This is their big, their big time of the year, with people bringing their boats out. So that's, and then fluxing in the school, having some summer day camps, and they got a couple more coming, so it just run out of parking places.
So in addition to the wonderful world of public works, the library is very excited to be able to announce that it seems like we're coming to a resolution with the interlibrary loan that has been on pause. So that's a great thing. So just be watching for, they'll make an announcement on Facebook when it's back up and, up and going. And my final announcement is the most important one, and that is, as of this morning, I actually had a house with a place to sleep in it, and so I'm officially moved. So thank you for your patience.
That's great. Great to hear that. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public participation, or public comment period, and this is a chance for the general public who are in the room to comment to the council. It's not really a dialogue, but you can bring questions, or you can bring other information, particular issues you might be concerned about. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We will have an opportunity for those joining us online to do public comment later on in the evening. Not a very full room, but I'll ask anyways to be official, anybody wish to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, we'll just keep moving. Next on the agenda is our action items. Our first item is item number 186-24. It is to consider action relative to adopting the July 16th, 2024 consent agenda. To get it out on the table, I will read it that the consent agenda, item number 186A, be adopted, and that is to consider action relative to an anonymous donation to the Freeport Community Library. Be it ordered that a $2,000 anonymous donation to the Freeport Community Library be accepted.
Still moved.
Second.
Any reason for additional consideration of this item, to bring it off the consent agenda for discussion? Not seeing any, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Senate Agenda passes, thank you. All right. Next up, we are going to open a public hearing to consider special amusement permit renewals. This is item number 187-24. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing if anyone here in public wishes to provide testimony on the special amusement permit renewals for Cadenza, Stars and Stripes, Hilton Garden Inn, or the Freeport, Freeport Oyster Bar. This is a public hearing, you're welcome to come and share your comments about any of those establishments and the renewal of their special amusement permit. Anybody on, online? All right, not seeing any public comment, we will close the public hearing, comment period. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the be it ordained?
I can. Be it ordained that the following special amusement permits be approved pending code enforcement and fire rescue endorsement. Cadenza, Stars and Stripes, Hilton Garden Inn, and Freeport Oyster Bar.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any conversation or comments from counselors before we take action? Seeing any, just a reminder to the general public, special amusement permits are required in any business establishment that is serving alcohol and providing music. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Six to zero. Thank you. That concludes our public hearing for this evening. Our next item is to set a public hearing, item number 188-24, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss a consent agreement for a particular piece of property. Before we find out about it, let's get it on the floor. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for August 6th, 2024, at the council meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m. in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss a consent agreement for property located at 114 Hunter Road, Freeport.
All right, been moved and seconded. Sophie, I know we, we're just setting the public hearing, and we'll have some more presentation of facts and information at that meeting on the 6th, but just for context.
Sure. So this is a property that actually, a council, I think it was Counselor Fornier, brought to the council's attention, that had multiple issues that made it an unbuiltable lot for a second home, fairly large property that had been divided into three lots. One of the issues that the planning board, we took to planning board, and you actually adopted a change to the ordinance that would address the issue that it was split by two zoning districts, and the resource protection and rural, are our one, are our two. So you've made it now a buildable lot. However, there are some issues with this lot that in order to get a building permit, we would need council to agree to. It has a garage that was built too close to the right-of-way setback. It, the consent that we're looking at would have the council agree to that and allow the garage to remain where it is. And the consent would also allow the garage to be modified in the future, as long as it doesn't further encroach on the setback. And one of the questions that the council will have to arrive at is what any fine would be, or is there a portion of the legal bill, all or a portion of the legal bills, that the town would need to take on, not the town, the applicant would need to pay? And I want to talk to council a little bit about that when you're considering. We are waiting for some final numbers from the surveyor. We're supposed to have those this week. We have a consent agreement that has been reviewed by the attorney, modified by the attorney, and reviewed again by the attorney, which we've stopped, I'll review at this point. So this will be what we're going to bring, perhaps staff will make some minor adjustments to it, and we'll be able to post that for the public to see. But hopefully, this would set it up so these folks could build a second residential property on this parcel.
Thanks for that context. The item's been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing. Any further discussion before we take action? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, six to zero. We have a public hearing set for this consent agreement on August 6th. Our next item is 189-24, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss amendments to Chapter 17 of the Electric Code for the town. Counselor Benoit, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for August 6th, 2024, at the council meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m. in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss amendments to Chapter 17, Electrical Code for the town of Freeport.
Second. Moved and seconded. Sophie, any context here? Nick's not in the room, but.
We actually have Nick online. Yep.
There's Nick. Hey, Nick, sorry. You're awfully small.
Hi, can you hear me?
Awfully small on the screen. There we go, now you're big. Right.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Good evening, Nick.
All right. Yeah, I, bringing this forward, the State of Maine adopted, the State Electrical Examining Board adopted the 2023 National Electric Code. We got late notice on it, so it's coming to me now, but that was effective July 1st, so all electricians are required to wire to the, and homeowners, to the 2023. We're just updating the ordinance to the 2023 as amended by the State Electrical Examining Board.
Great. Good to be in compliance with state code. Do you anticipate any large public feedback on this change, Nick?
No, I don't, this has been in the works for quite a while. I thought it was going to be a year ago, but it's been kind of delayed with a few things. There isn't a lot of changes that are really, they're just updating some, some standards. The state did continue with their continued exceptions with allowing the typical RoMAX you see, and commercial buildings, and some other items, but basically, the updates are more related to the fire department disconnects, and some solar requirements, as well as electric vehicle charging equipment. But it's all going with like industry regularly standards at this point.
Any questions for Nick before we set this public hearing? Eric?
I just have a quick question. Knowing that we're, all we're doing is changing the date on the ordinance, does it make any sense for us to simply say the current National Electric Code as amended by the state, or do we need to change this every time because it needs to specify which code?
So we're not required to enforce the Electrical Code. That is, that is a council's decision. And in order to do that, we have to update it, as a legislative body of the town council, you have to update the code every time that it's changed. That's a little different than some other standards, when you're preempted by state law. This is different, where in order to have an Electrical Code and to enforce it and inspect it, you need to actually change it every three years.
Specify which one it is. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, we're setting the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is item number 190-24. And this is take action regarding a bid award for a new single-axle plow truck chassis. Before we start, Earl, let's get the item on the floor. Counselor Fornier, could you please read the be it ordered?
Certainly. Be it ordered that Freightliner of Maine Westford be awarded the bid for a single-axle plow truck chassis in an amount of $108,509.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
This is part of the plow truck that we're replacing that was approved in the budget. I will share, when we opened bids, I think three weeks ago, I was a little disappointed because we were told all the trucks would be 2025, before the bill date. Freightliner has notified me that they have a closing spot that's open, and I plan on reserving it when I walk out this door, and that means that truck will be built this year.
And we have a note in our agenda about the budget line item. Is there really that much difference between what we budgeted and what we're paying for?
Notice there's another piece that comes out of that, that one number of $250,000 of the truck chassis, but there's also plow gear that comes with it. It's another. There's still a savings, yes, there's a hundred.
I see. So, the $250 is for both the truck and the gear?
The combined, yes.
Right, very good. We'll get to that in a second. All right, so we just had an explanation of that. Any other questions for Earl? All those in favor of awarding the bid to Freightliner of Maine? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Hang on before you go make your phone call. We'll get you the second one, Earl. Item number 191-24, to consider action relative to awarding a bid for the new single-axle plow truck gear for Public Works. That's the word I missed earlier when I was reading this. Thank you. Counselor Fornia, could you please read that one as well?
Sure. Be it ordered that H.P. Fairfield of Scowhegan, Maine be awarded the bid for a single-axle plow truck gear in the amount of $110,189.25.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. So.
That part of the bid is the dump bed, all the plow gear, the equipment in the truck, the sanders, all of that stuff. That'd be carried up Scowhegan and they'll install all of that. I will share, we will be under budget on some of these items, but don't get real excited about the numbers because something that we learned last year is if we ask vendors for specific stuff like toolboxes, they go by and put 10% on them and sell them back to us. We pull that stuff out and we're going to purchase it ourselves, hoping it's going to save about 10% on it. There will be some pretty good cost savings because I was surprised that the truck numbers were down where they were. I was expecting 120. I wasn't expecting 108. So, that was a pleasant surprise.
And no logistics problem that the truck purchase is from one vendor and the gear installation is with another, whether it's nowhere near?
My first year in Freeport, the gentleman that was our salesman at that time approached me and told me the same thing that I was just talking about, the toolboxes. If he had to buy the truck and wait till the plow gear come in, we were paying interest on that. So, that's the reason that you see the two bids for the one item. So, we only pay for that truck when it's here, and then we don't have to pay to that gear until it's put on the truck. So, they were putting a cost, they were putting cost on it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yes.
I have no doubts. You were sharp as a tack on the budget on that.
I think I know the answer. Stainless steel, dumb body, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's the right answer. Thank you.
Eric?
Earl, any issue with the fact that we will actually get the truck sooner than you anticipated? Is the gear going to be ready just as quickly?
There is a little bit of a concern, and we already put a plan in play. When I received the truck from Freightliner, we had to turn the trade-in because that's what, and that's our spare truck. So, we're not short of truck. We've got it, but we don't have a backup. So, what we are contemplating doing, if we were to go down the road, if something happened that we couldn't get a truck back up within a couple of days, we've set alternate routes to put pickups, one tons to plowing the small side routes and put big trucks on the big route. I don't anticipate that happening because I got a pretty damn good mechanic. He don't let stuff set long. He'll get it fixed.
What happens to the old plow truck?
The old one goes to Freightliner.
Okay.
They took it in, they took it in on the trade-in.
That's the pickup truck we get $3,000 for, yeah.
Now, if I can, just for a second, because we do have another truck that's at Scowhegan now. We finally did get the truck in and everything from the last one. Received a phone call this afternoon that they're ready to start swapping that gear over, which he's told me we should have that truck by the 1st of November. So, that makes me, that's why I feel a little bit safe about the way we're doing this right now.
Any other questions? Daryl?
Another comment, and you're all going to laugh at me when I say this, but I think being in position with a strong capital budget that's properly funded allows us to do savings and act quickly. So, again, let's make sure we get that back up. Thank you.
Totally agree.
I'm going to bring that up in just a second.
All right, if there's no further questions, all those in favor of number 191-24, awarding the bid award for a single-axle plow truck gear to H.P. Fairfield and Scowhegan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there's your authority, Earl. If you need to go. We got one more. Sorry. I had a number 192. I was just trying to cut you loose so you can go make your call. I had a number 192-24, related to awarding a bid for a 3/4-ton pickup truck for Public Works. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that Weers Motor Sales of Arundel, Maine be awarded the bid for a 3/4-ton pickup truck in the amount of $50,301.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Earl?
This is the one I would, I will answer Mr. Daryl's question. This is my truck. We're replacing it, which the truck is not going anywhere. The truck's going to stay at Public Works and become a mechanic's truck because of all of our equipment. What we have been using is the ex-fire chief's old Expedition. So, that tells you how old that Expedition is, and it's tired. So, we're trading it in, but we're keeping our vehicle. There are three people that's wanting this very vehicle because it's last year's model, 2024, but at a pretty good price. And I, again, will make a phone call in the morning that this has been approved and I don't have to wait to bond it. We have the money to do it, and that reserved this truck for us.
Thank you, Town Manager, and Jessica Malloy.
Why do you think none of these other dealers submitted a bid? It seems like a pretty easy thing.
Nobody had a truck. That's the reason. Mr. Daryl is very right. Being able to have the reserves to pay for this stuff when we ordered has, just in my short time here, which is 15 years, it's helped us get two sidewalk machines. It's helped us get plow truck gear that's sitting on the yard, but people can't commit. We can't. And that's huge when you're able to say, hey, I'll see you tomorrow afternoon with a check. And it's like, what? And that worked.
And even with that, and the other dealers said they could get their hands on a truck or order one in time.
Correct.
It's the only one. Okay.
All right, so we're going to take a vote on 192-24. All those in favor awarding the bid for the 3/4-ton pickup truck to Weers Motor Sales in Arundel?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
I'd like to thank y'all for your support.
Thank you, Earl.
Right on top of the details. Thank you. All right, our next item, a little housekeeping here, is number 193-24, related to the town council's schedule. We've had a little bit of back and forth trying to see if we could get to Bustons Island this summer for a council meeting, joint meeting with the Village Corporation Board. In my time in the council, always been a fantastic evening. I think at the last meeting, we had some discussion about some dates moving around. The clerk got follow-up information from the Village Corporation out there about what days actually were available, and we're back to the original or somewhere near the original date of going out there, which is August 13th, which will be our second meeting in the month of August, even though it's only a month, I'm sorry, a week after our regular meeting here at stuffy, non-wide-open space Town Hall. So, we need to amend the schedule because we amended the schedule at the last meeting about changing our meeting dates. So, the September 3 meeting will be back here at Town Hall. We'll be adding Bustons Island joint meeting with the Village Corporation to August 13th. And there will not be a second meeting of the council here in chambers in the month of August.
That sounds like time off.
Do I have those right?
You do.
Right. So, I'll just read this one since I just recited it, that the, be it ordered that the annual meeting with the Bustons Island Village Corporation be scheduled for August 13, 2024, and a regular town council meeting be held on September 3, 2024, as previously scheduled.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
John, just as a point of information, I won't be there on the 13th, so.
Wow, you're going to miss that one?
Yeah, I know. It's too bad.
All right. We can bring you in on, you know, a Zoom screen or something. It doesn't feel as good, but.
I can't get the food.
Okay, thanks for the heads up. Item number 174-24 has been tabled until the Municipal Facilities Committee has a chance to digest the item. So, that moves us on to public comment for anybody attending virtually. Sophie, do we have anybody? If you are attending virtually, this would be the time to raise your hand electronically and we can move you over.
So, we have the media and somebody who is watching, just as for interest.
Okay. If there's no interest from the virtual participants, we'll go ahead and move on to other business. That concludes our action items for this evening at 6:55.
I took this one off because I thought these were going to last longer.
Could you tell me which one?
Number one.
Number one? Okay. So, we have an update on the comprehensive plan. Oh, this is my first time saying it. Assistant Town Manager Caroline Pelletier.
Oh, good thing I arrived just in time for this item. We have a client tonight. So, I apologize for being late. I was in a meeting about the comprehensive plan. That is my fascinating life. So, we continue to work on updating our comprehensive plan. The survey, online survey we were doing closed today. I am super excited because, let's see, the hot off the press number, could be off a couple. I don't know how many we got in the mail today, is that we got 446 surveys back.
Wow.
Which I was pretty happy about. I think with the downtown visioning, we got maybe like 700 or a little bit more, but that included a lot of outreach to tourists and mailing lists of our business community, so I was really excited. Daryl, you'll be happy to know, 75 of those were paper surveys. We set up boxes here at the library and thanks to the planning board. They have been doing a ton of tabling. Mitch Ruda has amazing tabling skills. He worked the election, which we had very low turnout, and got 20 people to sit down and fill out their surveys before they left. So, that went really well. So, we have been trying to do a lot of outreach for the first phase of the plan. So, North Star Planning Board in the first phase has been doing a lot of silent work behind the scenes to update the 10 or so inventory chapters that the state requires. It's a lot of outreach to community groups, taking census data and other data to combine into these 10 chapters, things as housing, natural resources, demographics. The planning board has been through each of those chapters and given feedback, as does staff. North Star has been working on refining those chapters, and I just committed to those going live on futurefreeport.com early next week. So, we will be doing targeted outreach to stakeholders to get feedback on the chapters. So, we want people that, you know, nobody opens space, and marine resources, our boards and committees, and local organizations to look at the data, see if they see something we missed, or if there's something awesome, or if there's something wrong. It's not really to change the scope because we have certain requirements that we need to meet and certain obligations under the state criteria, but just to get extra sets of eyes to hear from the community. We had our first community workshop at the Freeport Community Center. I think we were debating numbers. I've been saying about 100. Ben thought, not including board and committees, they were at 75. So, 75 to 100 people. We did do a lot of outreach to get people to that workshop. We did about 4,700 direct mails. We were lucky that we could piggyback on the mailer that Suzanne was doing for cleanup week. We did about another 600 backpack stuffers to the schools. Getting and sharing information at the upper levels has been a little bit of a challenge, but we were able to do that with the youth. We've been piggybacking on the municipal bulletin. We paid for some Facebook marketing. We've been doing a lot on social media, and then again, a lot of tabling. So, we were happy with, it's been a lot of actually outreach behind the scenes, but we were happy with the attendance. So, we've done the survey. We did the first workshop. We're going to go live and look for feedback on the chapters. But the next part of the process is another series of three community workshops. We are working on another direct mailer, which I'm going to go to Sophie tomorrow and ask for some more money. We want to do another direct mail to all mailing addresses in Freeport, first save the date for the next three meetings. So, Monday, September 23, we're going to have a community workshop on housing. Monday, October 7, I believe. I may get the last two off because you guys are moving so fast. I didn't get to look it up. One's going to be about natural resources, and then on November 18, I believe, that is the one that is going to be about future land use, and that's really, they're all important, but that one is where do we want to see housing? And where do we want to see growth? And what might it look like? So, that's, they're all really important, but I think that's going to be a really important one to hear from our residents because again, this is going to guide us in policy and land use decision and the council and some of the investments. So, we'll use those, we'll send the postcard to advertise to save the date. We'll take those three meetings and get some additional community feedback, and then we'll work on forming goals and implementation strategies, continue to work with the planning board. I think from the council, if I spam you with information, if you could be sharing that with your networks, that's super important. We hope you'll all be able to participate in those three community workshops. We're working on locations. I'll probably be at either Meeting House Arts or the high school. But again, we'll include that information in the mailer, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
The Grange might be another possible location.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can see what their.
Get to, and they have some parking.
Capacity is, okay.
I'll just add that the Housing Committee is going to meet tomorrow. The first thing on the agenda is to share the good news that the council voted to extend the life of the Housing Committee, so we're throwing a party for that. But seriously, knowing that this schedule was coming, one of the items on the agenda for tomorrow is to find out how that committee can dovetail into that meeting on September 23 to provide maybe some more specifics. I don't know. It still has to be worked out. We just sort of brainstormed this co-presentation idea this afternoon. So, hopefully, that'll be some pretty juicy information. The data is compelling. There's a lot of really good data out there. If you want to follow what's, you know, what the numbers say we should have, could have, need to have in order to have healthy dynamics in our economy, there's lots of different ways to illustrate that data. And I think the Housing Committee is looking to sort of co-present or parallel that data presentation with tangible things for what actually some of those conclusions of the data might illustrate. So, that could mean pictures of what buildings might look like or looking at opportunities where we might add options for density and to just get some more housing under construction because it's a straight-out supply problem. We absolutely need more supply. Anyway, so that's just a little sidebar.
So, the other sidebar I'll add is that today, we, Brett and I, had a meeting with North Star Planning. They're going to be working on the design review ordinance update. So, we met with their team, which includes a landscape architect and an architectural historian. We're concerned and aware, I think, of public burnout and fatigue of public meetings and surveys and putting stickers and all that stuff. So, we've talked about some ways to kind of get some of the feedback we need for that process, parallel to some of these comp plan meetings that we already have planned in addition to the public sessions with the planning board. So, we are aware of that. We are going to be having a joint workshop with North Star, the Project Review Board and the Planning Board, and we'll be, we're going to do special outreach to the Housing Committee and the Central Core Working Group. We're going to have a workshop from 4:00 to 5:30 on the first Wednesday in August, which is the 7th here in the council chambers. So, we invite you to participate in that, but, you know, be aware that we are trying to integrate that into this process because we've all been to a lot of meetings, and we welcome any feedback you have on any of these public sessions. We're trying to tweak the format a little bit for the housing workshop based upon some feedback we've heard for some residents. So, welcome feedback.
So, one of the questions I've been getting about the comp plan process is now that Caroline isn't the town planner, who is going to be in charge? now that Caroline isn't the town planner, who is going to be in charge? And one of the visions that I had, I've had multiple visions, but one of them in creating the Assistant Town Manager position is for some of these high-level projects, especially ones that she's gonna be in charge of implementing, to have somebody in the manager's office able to oversee them. So we would envision that the new town planner would be very involved. Brett will be very involved, but we're gonna keep consistency with this process by keeping Caroline as the overarching responsible party.
That's good news.
When is the climate action workshop scheduled for? The Public Climate Action Day that we talked about last time, I forgot.
I'll send that back to Sophie. I mean, FSAB's had a couple public climate action workshops, but I think you guys are gonna have a special one. I do think there's opportunity to piggyback on the natural resources workshop that we have. I can't, Chalmers, don't quote my dates and topics for the last two, because I might have flipped them, but either on that October, November, I don't know how that fits into your timeframe, but that would be an opportunity that we could piggyback there if not, if that's not too late for you.
We're planning multiple, that's where we're planning multiple district meetings. So I think we're still working on those dates, but that'll, the idea was to have both one for, within District 1, but also maybe a general one for anybody who missed their district. So maybe that could be part of that other piece. One of the questions that I have continued to hear as we've been rolling out the comprehensive plan is how committees and boards sort of have input, since they are some of the people that spend weeks and months and years sitting with some of these topics. And I know that the response at the beginning was, you're citizens, you should be filling out the survey. And it sounds like that data will then go back to some of those committees to see if they also have something to add. But I'm just wondering if there is another place within the process where committees will have particular input into resource conservation, for example.
Yeah, so we are gonna do, for the next step, we're gonna do some targeted outreach, either through North Star staff contacts, to boards and committees, you know, targeted like, hey, sustainability, we'd like you to look at this chapter. I mean, people are welcome to look at all of them. You're right, for the survey, it was really important that we got individual voices, but we will be sending the draft chapters and asking committees to look at them. I think we had talked about a timeline for that work to wrap up by the end of September. North Star's working, and then I think having the boards and committees come to those additional community workshop is really important because we are gonna use the information from those discussions to help us shape the goals and implementation strategies, which they'll get additional opportunities to input later on. But it's really great, I think, to have everyone involved in these vocal, visible, community discussions. And committee members would be welcome to comment on any of the chapters on their own, but, you know, we do wanna do target for Lake Shellfish to reach out and have the committee as a whole look at it, and we're gonna actually send some targeted questions because we know it can be overwhelming to get 30 pages of data, so some kind of certain things that we're looking for, because we thought that would help the committee feedback process.
Any other questions or comments for Caroline?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask her a question?
Please step up to the microphone, Chalmers, so we can catch you on record.
Chalmers Hardenberg, I've been following the council discussion about the outreach on the Climate Action Plan, and as somebody said, aren't we gonna be meetinged out? So I was hoping that the neighborhood climate action plans could also entertain comp plan questions, so that we're not attending even more meetings. It's a suggestion. Thank you.
Yep, good point. Sophie?
I was just gonna say, one option would be to just have council neighborhood meetings, have
Not categorize them, yeah.
And have climate action, comp plan, have a few things on the agenda. I don't wanna speak over the people who came up with the.
Well, I also think that we talked about this being the start of re-implementing those regular district outreach efforts. In a perfect world, I would love to have a climate action plan one, but I definitely kind of, it resonates with me, the meetings and kind of exhaustion there, so that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's really, the setup of these meetings is really important because we're paying North Star to do a lot of that data workforce, and they're the ones that really know the data, have compiled the data, compiled the survey results, and these are targeted. You know, the nice thing about not being so broad is people can pick and choose. Like, you might not be interested in the environment, but you are about housing or vice versa. So I hope that that will draw people to what they're interested in. But again, we welcome opportunities to piggyback. So we had a quick conversation with John today. If there's work, we don't wanna derail it, and we do need to get certain things accomplished, but if there's ways to integrate or piggyback or table, like, we are definitely all for it, so reach out. Hearing Chalmers made me think of one more thing. So Chalmers gave me some great feedback on the comp plan website. We are having North Star do some additional work to the website, so next week I think you'll see some improvements. Thank you, Chalmers, to the future Freeport website in addition to those draft chapters. If you haven't already, I encourage you to go to the website on the bottom and sign up for the email list. We have about a little over 300 subscribers so far.
Just to follow up on what you said, Sophie, I think that we could have some more conversation about how those could be integrated. Because you're right, we did have the intention of, even if people were primarily coming to talk about Climate Action Plan, that there was gonna be quite a lot of information exchange, and because we wanted the district councilors to be there, that we were planning for that to also have an opportunity for, to discuss other topics. And I hear in part of what Caroline is saying, we may not wanna be paying North Star to go to all of those district meetings, but even if we had you or another person who was working closely on the plan who could answer questions about it and to be promoting those other targeted meetings.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna offer. I think, you know, we can't do like a future land use workshop at every district meeting, but I think if you wanted me to come to the meetings, just to give like a high-level overview or update on the comp plan, I think that's very reasonable, and if it's something I can't be at, I feel like with Brett and Sophie and Cecilia and the new planner, I feel like we can divide and conquer. I don't feel like it's something we need to have North Star there. If you wanna ask North Star questions on the data, then, you know, I'd encourage you to come to the community workshops.
Eric, do we have a sense of the calendar timing of sort of what some of those district workshops?
The goal was to do those basically one a week through most of September. And so that, with the intention of then bringing the Climate Action Plan in front of the council again in early October. But I think Sophie was working on logistics in terms of dates, and I think when we were doing that, it could be that those meetings actually run into October, as we're looking at that. And the goal was to have them physically in the district, but we know that there are some districts where that is difficult if there's no assembly space there. So easy enough in District 1 and District 2. District 3 is probably a possibility. District 4 is a little, little challenge.
I'll just add that I strongly endorse that idea of having a targeted, sorry, a more generic meeting that the advertisement is, come talk about the town. On the agenda will be the comp plan, the Climate Action Plan, you know, other items that we wanna put on there, where you can walk your dog on trails, et cetera. So, which may bring out a lot of people. So I strongly endorse that idea of having, that we, that we not so tailor the council district meetings to where we might inadvertently cut off groups of people. The communication, which we have been striving for for so long, to get the back and forth is, in my opinion, a really top priority.
I agree, and I think to your point, and we talked about this a little bit, that although our goal around the Climate Action Plan was really to do a lot of education about what is in the plan, what isn't in the plan, it's entirely possible that people who already think they know everything about the plan simply wouldn't show up to that meeting, or if they already have sort of one mindset or another about it, that may not be. But if they're also gonna talk about dogs on trails, you might actually get people there who would benefit from hearing about a number of other topics besides the one that they actually came for.
And also just to add to that, this is, again, meant to get us used to these district outreach events, and so if we just wanna jump right back in, that's also great, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? That if we do a meeting a week in September, there's a lot of meetings happening in September and October into leaving the district meetings, which are focused on Climate Action Plan and other stuff, with a lot of the comprehensive plan workshops? Would it make sense to, I think Caroline suggested this, the one that's focused on natural resources, have that be a combined natural resources and climate action plan-focused meeting? And let the district meetings be spaced out, a little, that allows us to bring the Climate Action Plan to council still in the fall, but then take our time for the district meetings and not overburden everybody with lots of meetings in the fall.
I think when I said the comment, I was picturing it being like an add-on or addition to, to kind of beef up. I feel like if we have a whole thing on the Climate Action Plan, it
Too much.
Yeah, that's
Too much.
Talking with Ben from North Star, they're planning like three-part meetings, so I think you're gonna take all of 90 minutes to two hours. So I wouldn't wanna add on. However, if, I think one of the things that was driving the need to get it done before it got too cold was a desire to be outside. And perhaps we look at the places that might have to be outside, like if we were in the big, under the big whatchamacallit at the shelter at Winslow, maybe that needs to happen September, October, but maybe the one that might happen at the library or someplace else, so.
There's also the possibility that we could move some of those up, now that we don't have council meetings at the end of August. It's, you know, that could, I know that's dicey, but it's, you could start in late August.
I mean, summer's hard, we know.
But September gets, I think, even harder because then everyone's schedule is just that much more full. So that, that's another possibility. Maybe the two of us and Sophie should circle back on that in terms of overall timing.
So what if we take an internal map of all the stuff that we have going on? Because the other thing is, this is very planning-heavy, and the planning staff also has some pretty big projects coming up in front of PRB.
I don't work in that department anymore, so I'm not.
You're so funny.
Yeah, they're pretty busy. They don't have a meeting in August, though. I'll throw that out.
Okay, all right. So I guess, let me just try to map that out, and I'll be back in touch with folks. I can send information to you. If you don't copy all, that works.
So I would say, like, I definitely think if you wanna do like tabling or outreach at any of these, that's an opportunity we could add in without derailing the overall conversation. I like your timing on the Climate Action Plan, because before Maddie left, she went through all the draft comp plan chapters and made all the connections between what's in the Climate Action Plan and how it relates to these, you know, 10 or so chapters. So we have that work there, so if the timing works, that will, it'll already be integrated of how those two plans overlap. If it doesn't, that's fine, we don't need to include it, but it would be nice if we could incorporate one into the other or, you know, bits and pieces. We have options of how we move forward with the Climate Action Plan during this process.
All right, thanks very much, Caroline. Look forward to getting those things scheduled and getting that communication of that schedule out to the general public. Thanks very much. Our, that concludes our other business section. Our last item is to go into executive session related to a collective bargaining conversation. We do not expect to have a final resolution or an action item out of this executive session due to some other circumstances. So that means we'll not be coming out of executive session with any formal action, although we do have to open the doors and officially exit executive session before we adjourn.
Two executive sessions.
Yeah, we've got two. We've got a, we reposted, because we had a request for the three.
Oh, right, right, right. This was on my table. This was not the latest one?
No, we, we had a request from Counselor Pilch, I think.
Instead of waiting for MFC?
Yeah.
But are we gonna take action?
No. I don't think.
Just an update.
Okay, so we'll have two conversations of update without any action to report back out. So we will not officially come out of executive session with any action or activity other than to adjourn the meeting. So Counselor Pilch, could you please read the order to open executive session?
To consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 405-6D pertaining to a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freeport and the Teamsters Local Union Number 340 for the Freeport Fire Department, I move that the town council enter executive session.
Second, you moved in second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Right, we are in executive session.
And that was Eric.
Can you end the Zoom?
Thank you.
So, you guys are going to meet officially, uh, Climate Action Plan. Oh, it's, it was used in the conference room, so it goes out there. It goes valuable. It's a great experience.[1428.11]